Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 20th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Education. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on July 16th, 2020 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Judy, Mrs. Haas? Okay. I see she's here, but she's on camera.
I'm here.
Thank you, Judy. Dr. Harris?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Dr. Swasan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I will need a motion to move into executive session. I'll read the blurb first, and then I'll take the motion in a second. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 70 of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are employee-related materials/unaffiliated contracts. The matters to discuss in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Ann. We are in executive session, and we will return at 7:30 to this URL. Thank you, everyone. We're back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Dr. Swasan. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Hio?
Here.
Thank you. And Dr. Swasan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'm noting that Mrs. Haas joined as well while you were giving a roll call. Mr. Mahmood?
Thank you. I'll put that in the notes as well.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the superintendent's report. Oh, sorry. We'll go motion to approve minutes. I'd like to actually read the comments from the board. Sorry, the public input intro right after we do the approval of minutes so that I open that up and people can start logging, signing in to the Google Doc. So can I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pulserfer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I realize that we did not do the pledge, so I'm going to pause in between the two actions for the minutes and stand to do the pledge. Thanks for that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, with all due diligence, one nation under God, with liberty, democracy, and tolerance. Thank you. My apologies for skipping that. Not everything is on my screen at the same time. Okay, so now I'll take a motion to approve the regular public meeting minutes. I know there were some changes requested by board members that were just editorial and nay for. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to read the public meeting piece now, and then we'll move into superintendent's report. We very much welcome input from the public. During virtual board meetings, though we one-time during board meetings, the public is invited to submit questions or comments. Members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes, or may choose to discuss any topic. Before you submit your question or comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our virtual public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks questions about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Just to note for people watching us on live stream that there is the opportunity on the screen underneath where the video is showing for you to fill out a Google form, and that will dump into the Google form that I have on my screen. And when we do public input on the action agenda, I will read all of those into the minutes. Thank you. So for now, I will turn it over to Dr. Intunis for the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Swasan. And I know that people are waiting for this. I have some good news to share first. Thank you to the Hillsborough High School Dance Team members, Laura Radomski and Jessica Tuck, who collected paper and canned goods, beverages, and disinfectants for the Samaritan Homeless Internment Program, SHIP program in Somerville. SHIP helps to provide services for the poor and working poor and their families. The dance team collected over 100 items. Great job, and thank you. Also, I'd like to offer heartfelt congratulations to the 102, I'm sorry, to the 102 class of 2020 seniors who were the recipients of 125 awards, ranging from $100 to $3,000, totaling We are very grateful to all of our donors, with special appreciation and gratitude to those who created awards to honor the memory of loved ones. They include Dr. Thomas Enos, Fred and Ruth Quick in memory of Jacob Quick, Girl Scouts Heart of New Jersey Service Unit 72, Hackensack Meridian Healthcare Carrier Clinic, Hillsborough Baseball League, Hillsborough Democratic Alliance, the HEF, Hillsborough High School HSA Memorial Committee, the Hillsborough High School Faculty and Staff, I'm sorry, Hillsborough High School Faculty and Staff Memorial Committee, and then the HHS, HSA, Hillsborough High School Yearbook Committee, the Hillsborough Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, the Hillsborough Republican Club, Hillsborough Soccer Club, Irma Pressey Foundation, Italian-American Club of Canal Walk, Klein Recycling, Manville Hillsborough Elks Lodge 2119, Mrs. C. in memory of Benito C., Mrs. Erin Denigan, National Art Honor Society, Nicholas J. Boris Jr. Memorial Scholarship, Special Olympics, Sunny Me Benevolent Association, the Aiello Family in memory of Paige Barry Aiello, the Arias Family in memory of Ada, Adam P. Arias, the Boris Family in memory of Nicholas J. Boris Jr., the Contractor Family, the Lepre Family in memory of Christopher Lepre, the Rotary Club of Hillsborough, the Rotary Club of Hillsborough Rotary Scholarships, the Snyder-Santa-Nostasso Family, the Spath Family in honor of William L. Spath, and the Women's Club of Hillsborough. So congratulations to all those students who did a drive-up scholarship award approval. So that's wonderful news. I wanted to thank everyone who responded to our surveys. We had over 5,000 responses from the community survey and almost 900 responses from our staff survey. So that was really, really great. Look for more, because there will be more surveys coming out. But please know that guidance continues to come to us by both the Governor's Office and the New Jersey Department of Ed. Thank you also to those who reached out via email with your thoughts and suggestions. Anyone who knows me at all knows that I really prefer to respond personally to each and every email. At this point, I'm getting so many, and while I want everybody to continue reaching out, it's becoming a little bit overwhelming to personally answer them all. So while I may not be able to either answer them all, or it will be a little, it may take more time for me to answer them, please know that I read every single one, and I share them with my colleagues. So it's fine if you want to keep sending them, because the more information we have, the better we're able to inform the plan that we're going to put forward through the community over the next couple of weeks. Also, just a reminder, you want to not forget to don your masks indoors and out when you can't social distance and when you're not with those in your own family. I know that we are all missing each other. Hugging each other is probably not a good idea, even with a mask on, and even if you're outdoors. But everybody is moving right along. Our numbers in New Jersey are remaining pretty static at the moment, although we suspect it's going to change. So that was just a little public service announcement out there. That's all. We're all walking around the office with our masks on, too. So hopefully, everybody is getting out there, enjoying some of this weather, and remembering to social distance and wear the masks. Okay, I do have a presentation. Let me see if I can share this. Hold on. An overview presentation. Do I have a thumbs up from board members? Can you see the?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So what I'd like to share with the community is an overview of the district restart plan, what we've been doing, the work we've been doing, and where we are with it. I'm going to say again that the plan is due to the DOE on August 1st. The District Restart Committee has been working for weeks on it and continues their work. And so I just wanted to be able to provide an overview this evening of where we are. So part of the Road Back Plan is that the district has to have a District Restart Committee, DRC. There are many people on the District Restart Committee, including those that you see up on the screen. There are staff members, there are administrators, there are teachers, there are all levels of the organization are represented, as well as board members. Also, our community partners are up on, are with us. So those are some of the people who make up the DRC, and their job is to coordinate the overall reopening plan, to coordinate that plan. And it has the people that we need to be on it, based upon what the governor and then New Jersey Department of Ed requested. So what have we been up to? We received the plan after the governor's address on June 26th. Since that time, we have been meeting and meeting and meeting. We sent out several surveys, as you can see. And we actually had another meeting this morning. We are meeting tomorrow, we are meeting Wednesday. At that time, we are going to aggregate all of the information into one district framework, which then the District Restart Committee will review and make sure we're meeting all of the goals set forth. These are the meeting dates that we have set up. What you're going to notice is that the meeting dates go through August. The reason for that is because we suspect that even though it's due to the state on August 1st, that things are going to continue to change and evolve, and we might get more information that we need to adjust. So we're going to need to pivot pretty quickly. So we continue to meet. Additionally, the department asks that we release the plan to the community four weeks prior to the first day of school. Our first day of school is September 6th. So four weeks prior to that is August 6th. So that is the latest date that we will get the release, our plan to the community. Does that mean that it is final and that we won't change it? No. It simply means that we're meeting the requirement as set forth by the state. Things will change as the governor and the Department of Ed put out different guidance. One of the things that the governor stated in his June 26th address was that every decision to reopen a sector of New Jersey is determined by data demonstrating the decline in the spread of COVID-19. And we've all heard him say, "Data determines dates." And that absence a shift in the public health data, school buildings will open in some capacity for in-person instruction and operations in the fall. That's important. As is, the reopening of our schools will include necessary limitations to protect the health and safety of our students and our staff. So each district is expected to develop in collaboration with community stakeholders a plan to reopen schools in the fall that best fits the district's local needs. Every school district is different. We are not, we're similar to many other districts, but we are not like every other district, just as every other district is not like us. So we're trying to keep all of that in mind, which is why it's important to get the information from our stakeholders, from our parents, our staff members, our community members, because it's all meaningful and all fits into what we're trying to do. Now, we understand that no plan is going to be the perfect plan, and that it's not going to work for everybody. But we're really trying to take into account all the things that people are sharing with us. As I said, the district does have a district restart team who coordinates the overall reopening plan. However, it works with each school's pandemic response team, PRT. The pandemic response teams are established to centralize and expedite and implement the COVID-19-related decision-making. And the building principal acts as the liaison from the pandemic response teams to the District Restart Committee. So you might be asking, well, what is the difference between these two committees? And so the pandemic response teams have actually much of the same type of person on their teams, but it's at the school-based level. Also, I think it's really important to note that with the exception of the 12-month employees that work, obviously, 12 months, every single person is volunteering and donating their time to this. Board members, 10-month staff members, everyone else. And that's, I think it's important to note that there's no financial compensation to anybody. And when I say with the exception of the 12-month employees, they're getting paid because they're 12-month employees. They're not getting paid additionally for being and doing this work. What is our priority as we move forward in trying to determine a plan that works best for Hillsborough? Well, of course, priority is for both staff and students. And we need to meet the, quote, "anticipated minimum standards" as set forth by the New Jersey Department of Education. We want to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19. And obviously, to the greatest extent possible, we're trying to get a plan for reopening, a reasonable plan for reopening. Some assumptions at this time. Now, we're adding things to this daily, almost. But right now, some assumptions that we can count on at this point, today at 7:45 PM on July 20th. We are not inviting any student teachers in the fall. We, at this time, we are having no visitors to our school, or very limited visitors, if it's essential. We won't be inviting people in to speak to classes. We won't be having large assemblies or gatherings. We will not be going on field trips. Contact tracing will be implemented. Water fountains will be turned off. I know that Mr. Mahmood, with his group, is working, talking about the water filling stations, what's going to happen with them. Face coverings will be required. Now, the Road Back Plan indicates that face coverings for staff members are required at all times, and they're saying for students, if they're highly encouraged, if social distancing is not possible, then they are required. We know, we're saying that we'd like face coverings required, with the caveat that we know that there are certain people who may not be able to utilize a face covering. Temperature checks, as of today, will be taken at home, not at school. And desks will all be facing one way. Right now, there are many more unknowns than there are knowns. We don't expect this to change anytime soon. As the governor said, data determines where we are, and that is the case here as well. So as the state continues its downward trend, then I suspect we'll be continuing to get more direction and vice versa. It's very possible the governor can say, "Schools are closed in September," and we go all virtual. We're just not sure at this point. Some important points to remember, that we still need to have 180 days. We absolutely must meet that requirement, and it's not up to us to decide who meets that requirement. It's up to the Department of Ed to decide what meets that requirement. And we have to plan for all in-person. We don't believe 100% fully in-person is reasonable for September. We have to do an all-virtual plan in the event we need to pivot within 24 hours, like we had to do in March. Schools open, and then 24 hours later, schools are closed. And then we're trying to plan for a hybrid, which is a little bit of time in school, a little bit of time outside of school. And there are any number of approaches we could use that include, but are not limited to those that you see up on the screen. The instructional time must be equal to or more than four hours daily for students in grades 1 through 12, and 2 and 1/2 hours or more for students in kindergarten. Because we run a kindergarten program, we must follow the rules. I know that some people have emailed and asked, "Well, it's not a mandated program." But if a school district runs the program, then we need to follow the rules of that program. And a lot, much does revolve around our transportation, our nutritional services, and of course, our custodial maintenance and B&amp;G staff, because we want to ensure that everything is clean and ready to go and safe for students. So essentially, we're looking at three plans, but honestly, it's all virtual for all grade levels, all in-person for all grade levels, and a hybrid for all grade levels. So we're looking at upwards of 12 plans or so. An all-virtual plan for high school students is a little bit different than a virtual plan for elementary school students, for the basic reason that elementary students can't stay home alone. So those are some of the things that we have to keep in mind. We also want to try, we're hearing what families are saying about the family unit. And if you have three children, and they're each at different schools or different grade levels, theoretically, if it's a hybrid, you could be, have to be home three days or however many days it would entail. So we're trying to keep that in mind as well. Some factors to consider when we decide how we're going to move forward is our capacity to meet the health and safety standards as outlined, the access to PPE, hand sanitizer partitions. I don't think anyone is expecting that the district will provide personal protective equipment for every student or staff member every day. It would be cost prohibitive for the district to do that. That doesn't mean that it won't be accessible, if necessary. Any staffing shortages that can come of this, cleaning and disinfecting demands that most assuredly have already been set into motion, and of course, the educational effectiveness of what we're proposing. We want to keep the needs of our at-risk student populations in mind, as well as equity and staff needs. If we don't have our staff healthy to teach our students, then I'm not sure what we're going to do. The state indicates that they break it up into anticipated minimum standards and considerations. This is an important distinction, because anticipated minimum standards refers to items that must be definite components in our plan. And they're essentially related to health, safety, and operations. So they're related across the board to everything. The considerations refers to components that we should think about incorporating into the plan. Sometimes it's feasible to do it, and sometimes it's not feasible to do it for any number of reasons. There are four key subject areas that each of the subcommittees is looking at as they move forward with their recommendations for a plan. And they include the conditions for learning, leadership and planning, policy and funding, and the continuity of learning. Now, the plan talks, oh, I'm sorry, the plan talks about all of those things, but for this evening, I wasn't going to get into that. If anybody has any specific questions about it, please email me or reach out, and I'm happy to speak with you about it. Now, as you know, we sent out a survey to parents and to staff members. This, too, I'm going to offer. If anybody has more questions about this, I'm happy to answer them in an individual basis. I'm not going to go through every single question tonight, but I'm going to go through much of it. Also, I'd like to point out one more time that be on the lookout for more surveys, because now we know for a fact that parents, as they're hearing things or listening to other districts, parents are changing their minds, one way or the other. So we need to get, we need to dive deeper into the data, and we're going to start to do that. So be on the lookout for that as well, for both, by the way, for both parents and for staff members. Of the parent surveys, as I said, we received over 4, actually, it's probably a little bit higher now, responses. I didn't want to go ahead and adjust the number of responses we received, because from when I did this, simply because all the data matches right now. So I wanted to share what we had at the time that I completed the presentation. So this question was, "What school will your child attend when school opens on September?" And we asked each parent to complete a separate form for each child. So it would make sense, likely, that 32.3%, most of them are from the high school, because that's where most of our students are. We asked a question about reliable Wi-Fi and internet support, and this aligns with much of the data that Mr. Handler has put out year after year about our Wi-Fi access with our students at home. We asked, "If your child's in grades pre-K through 4, do you need a computer to be sent home with your child in the event it is necessary to engage in virtual learning?" Most of the people who responded did not have children in grades pre-K through 4, but some did, and there's about almost 14% who feel, parents believe they need a computer to help complete work in a virtual environment. So this is all really good information for us. We asked, "Knowing that social distancing is not a reasonable expectation on a school bus, and face coverings will be required, my child will." And the choices were ride the bus as assigned, walk to school, be driven to school, ride a bike, or drive. Now, 52.9% at the time indicated that the child or children would ride the bus as assigned. 35% or so indicated that the children would be driven to school. This is something that the building administrators will drill down on, simply because we may need to adjust our pickup and drop-off processes in each of the schools to make sure everyone is safe. The Road Back Plan requires that school districts be open in the fall for in-person instruction in some capacity. And we ask if, will your child be attending for in-person instruction of some sort? At the time, almost 80% of those who responded indicated yes. That's 78.8%, and about 21% indicated no. We suspect that that might have shifted a little bit. We're going to find out. But at the time, that's how many people we had who indicated the child would return to school. And we asked about what would work best for in-person instruction in some capacity for people's personal situations. About 37% indicated sometime in school, sometime at home. About 32% said in-person, in our buildings, regular schedule, ready to go. And 10% indicated in-person with a modified schedule, perhaps a half-day, perhaps A/B days. And 20, almost 21%, said what works best for their personal situation is a virtual environment. So we drilled down just a tiny bit more and asked why that was, and that was due to childcare issues. You know what? Yes, okay. Then we, I'm sorry, you know what? We didn't do that for that survey. I'm thinking about the parent survey. I apologize. I mean, the staff survey. Now, for the staff surveys, at the time that we did this, we had 742 responses. And just to put it in perspective, we have approximately 1,000 staff members. We asked for the building or school assignment, and that's the breakdown of that. So we had all the schools, including Central Office at Bloomingdale. So this survey went to all staff members. And we asked what the content area job assignment was. So what were things like administrator building-based, administrator central office, buildings and grounds, certificated staff, custodial, instructional assistance, secretaries, clerks, technology, transportation. And what you see here is predictable, about 72% of the 742 responses were certificated staff. So that makes sense, because most of our staff is certificated staff. So we asked if the plan requires all schools to be open for in-person instruction in some capacity. And while we are planning to have all health and safety measures in place, would they come to work? Where would they come to work? And 80.5% indicate, or indicated at the time, that they can either work from their school building or office, or both, if a hybrid model is offered. About 19.4, so almost 20%, indicated that they can work virtually, if that is an option. When asked why they can work or teach remotely, what was the reason below? It was for childcare concerns, was about 14.4%. The other ones, a small percent... The other ones, a small percentage, almost 6% was medical reasons as defined by the CDC. And again, almost split evenly. 6.3% medical reasons with comorbidities and things like that. But 73.6% of the staff members who responded at the time indicated that it wasn't applicable, and that was that. It was interesting that almost 15% felt that it was their child ca- concerns, also predictable. We asked, what would assist the staff member in decreasing any concerns they held about returning to work in September? And they were all pretty high. They ranged from 89.5% and the lowest was 54.4%. But the, at 89.5%, it was the daily nightly deep cleaning. If, if the people who responded felt that, that having a daily and nightly deep cleaning would assist in decreasing their concerns. And then, so with disinfecting restrooms throughout the day, which would mean that we would, on a rotational basis, basis, shut the restrooms down for about 20 minutes, clean it, and then students could utilize it again. Staff bathrooms as well. And 81%, almost 82%, talked about increasing hand sanitizing stations. The other things on there were limiting visitors, dis- uh, staff education on COVID, providing temporary barriers between students and staff, access to PPE. So you see that they're all pretty, pretty high. Some issues about transportation, and I'll certainly allow Mr. Mahmoud, if he, if he'd like to jump in, he can certainly do so if, if you'd like. If not, I can do it. Mr. Mahmoud, it's your call. I know it's awkward because we're all remote, so I'm not sure how you feel comfortable doing that or not.
Um, I have no problem, Dr. Antunes. Whatever, whatever you'd like. I certainly don't have a problem covering that section if you'd like. No issues. Let's arm.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Mahmoud.
So we, we definitely, based on the road back, there, there is some guidance, and there were three options that we had. The first option allowed for us to seat a student, um, one seat apart. Unfortunately, that option, when we take a 54-passenger bus, and if we were to use that option, it only allows us to have 11 students on a 54-passenger bus. That would be challenging for us because most of our buses are above 50 students easily on our three-tiered system. The other option, which I believe was an option that was out of state that was used, and that was also an option to us where we could use soft shields between seats. And that could be a barrier whether, they didn't say Plexiglas. It could be a possible curtain, um, or a, like, uh, like a light material type between students. If we were to consider that, we would then have to go to, um, on a 54-passenger bus, approximately 22 students. So that would certainly also limit the capacity of a bus. That's something that we, we're looking at, but again, could be challenging for us. A traditional opening would re, based on the road back, would allow, um, would allow us to occupy the bus with having all of our students have face masks on. So that would be a requirement if we went through occupying a bus with, with 54 kids, um, or, or more. So that, that would be some of our busing options. We did look at the, the hybrid schedule. Um, and that would be a split schedule both in school and virtual. Um, and there are some pros and cons. The pros would be there are less students per bus. The routes don't change, and we're able to maintain the same stops that we have currently. Some of the cons behind the hybrid would, may require a slight rerouting once the schedule is established. So that would mean a change in bus stops, et cetera. And we may really need to look at cluster stops as opposed to some of our stops that we're doing currently. Other considerations that we talked about when it came to busing, we considered non-negotiables, contractor routes, that we cannot change school times on the bid. So basically, we, we are limited to what we can do based on the current bids that we have. And we wouldn't be able to go out to bid this late in the game. Lowering student numbers. Uh, stu- uh, parents must waive transportation using a state form. So we are looking into the option as a committee as a whole of whether or not we're going to survey our parents about waiving transportation. And that would change the game a little bit because it would give us an idea of how much busing we actually need. If we can go on, Dr. Antunes. I don't know if there's a next slide on busing.
Okay, I, I apologize. I froze.
It's okay.
I froze. I totally froze. I apologize. Okay, let me go to the next one.
So the safety of drivers, aides, and students. Obviously, that was the top of the concern for us. And a health check log would be filled out each day by the driver and aide. We are, we, we did talk as a committee about a, a soft shield around the driver's compartment to protect the driver and also the students as well. We are not at the, at the time mandating, at this time, the driver to wear a mask. That's something that we're talking about. Aides will wear a mask at all times and face shields when in close contact with students. So please bear in mind that all of this is all in draft form. I, I want to be very clear that this is all in draft form. All students will be required to, um, so to bear a mask on the bus. Cleaning of the buses, that is something that is going to be very important to us. Certainly, we're going to go through a thorough cleaning. There'll be disinfecting where we have our electrostatic sprayers and enforcing our contractors to do the same level of cleaning compliance that we're following would be something that we're, we're absolutely going to do as well. So, and we're going to have them fill out an assessment that in fact, they have done the cleaning that we require. So facilities is next. I don't know, Dr. Antunes, if you want to, want me to cover that as well?
Sure.
Certainly. So things that we talked about, and again, this is all in draft form. Evaluation of our HVAC systems, making sure that any, any of the systems that need any repair, that we get those repairs done prior to students coming into the buildings. We have worked with our HB, HVAC professionals. We continue to work with them. And we are looking at our indoor air quality, overall indoor air quality assessment. And we're working with our environmental specialists to make sure that we cover areas in school, in the school district that may require us to look at ventilation and other areas that, um, that may need attention. We are picking up our summer cleaning, and that is being done with the, with the hopes that we are bringing, bringing students back. And we are looking particularly at our bathrooms for ventilation and other ideas in bathrooms that would make sure our students, besides cleaning them, that also the air quality is safe for students and staff. Enhanced cleaning. We, we did talk about that with the electrostatic sprayers that we have. We did, we do have chemicals that we have gone through our environmental professionals. We use them currently in our buildings, and we have, the municipal building has also used the same chemicals where the Department of Health, Police, and Fire reside. We are talking about high-touch areas throughout the school day and making sure that things like doorknobs, common tables, bathroom partitions, and hailware, handrails are constantly sanitized. And obviously, the cleaning, the cleaning of all student desks would be done, which right now, that is, is a nightly overnight cleaning. And we do sporadically clean every other room. In this case, every desk would be cleaned every. And personal protection for stakeholders. We have already started this process in which we've installed our own Plexiglas. We've done it in our schools. We've actually, and that would be a Plexiglas in areas where, if we do have visitors between the staff and the visitors, we do have Plexiglas that we've already talked about, guidance offices, nurses' offices. And we'll continue to work with our schools to make sure that our maintenance department is able to make sure that Plexiglas and that level of security is, is, or protection is all, in, in all of our buildings. Additional hand sanitizing stations are being put throughout the district. And that is something that is new. And we've already kind of put them out there in many of the schools as we speak. We are acquiring, and as everybody knows, PPE is a hot commodity. So we have acquired a lot of PPE currently, and we continue to acquire the PPE to make sure that our staff and students will be safe. Reality is that we need to have enough PPE in case people, students or staff come without it. We would have backup material as well. We are also looking at making sure that our working sinks, there are working sinks throughout there, making sure that hot water is also. We had a couple of schools that we had to make sure that that is adjusted. So we are working on that. We have installed stock paper towels and hand dispensers. It's a new system that we've put in, and that was done over the last couple of weeks. We have signage that we have already sent out to the schools. We'll continue to provide more signage out there. And that would help just get the message out. We also are looking at all of our procedures, and we are required to fill out for our road back plan, cleaning and signage and a whole bunch of things that come along with buildings and grounds, plans and procedures that operate, our operations committee on the district restart committee on the operations side has been working on. So we look forward to rolling out more specific, Dr. Antunes, as we, as we roll out the plan.
Thanks, Mr. Mahmoud. I didn't know if you just wanted to just say, I don't have any, I just didn't know if you wanted to share any information about nutritional services that?
Yeah, I mean, right now, we, we are focused on the operations committee for the district restart committee as a whole. The Subcommittee of Operations has talked about nutritional services in detail. And as we continue to roll out the program and our, our model, we will, we will focus on that. The one thing I do want to say is that our free and reduced children in the district, that that is a priority when it comes to nutritional services, as we did throughout the summer months, that we will, no matter what model we use, that we will make sure that the free and reduced children in the district, that the food services piece is not hindered in any way, shape, or fashion. So whatever model we use, there could be a loss in some revenue in the program, but our concern really isn't the loss of revenue. It's the safety and nutrition of our students.
Okay. For technology, I just wanted to assure everybody that Mr. Handler has been working with his team to ensure that we will have what we need to, to, whether we go virtual, whether we're hybrid, whatever we need to do, that our technology is where it needs to be within the confines of what we have to work with. For human resources, I know, Mr. Callahan, did you want to share a moment about human resources?
Sure, Dr. Antunes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Of course, our staff i- is now and has always been the reason for all of our student successes. And right now, we have to recognize that ensuring the health and safety of our staff ensures those student successes ongoing, but also ensures student safety. So core considerations that, that we're looking at in the area of human resources is establishing flexible roles for each staff member to meet the needs of the students during this unprecedented time. Taking reasonable steps to ensure staff health, including screening and contact tracing, working closely with Mr. Handler in, in some of those areas. Ensuring that we're going to meet the needs of our medically fragile staff. The goal right now can't be to eliminate COVID-19. That just wouldn't be, wouldn't be feasible. And so the goal right now includes planning for staff absences, planning for instruction during staff absences, but also guiding staff towards appropriate absence procedures. And ensuring that, as an administration, we have guidelines regarding mentoring and staff evaluation, and that all of that is continuing to be met.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. And then curriculum instruction. Dr. Felstry, did you want to say a couple of words about that?
Absolutely. So this is a multifaceted area that we're having to address. Curriculum instruction and assessment is a huge piece. We are looking at how we are going to provide the learning in the three different environments that Dr. Antunes spoke of, all virtual, hybrid, and all in-person because it looks a little bit differently. We are looking to make sure that we adjust sequencing and pacing to make sure that we address the standards at the grade levels, but also address any of the learning gaps that we know have taken place last year. So that's a big task, and we're well on our way with doing that. In alignment with this is social-emotional learning and wraparound services, taking care of mental health, reaching out to families, self-care for teachers as well as for students. We know that when students first come back, they are going to want to socialize after not having been able to socialize, but will not be able to hug, will not be able to touch. So socializing will look different. So building in social-emotional learning experiences at the beginning of the school year as well as on a regular basis, and providing that self-care for teachers, making sure everybody's happy and healthy so that they're ready to learn. Professional development, again, multi-pronged in terms of providing professional development to staff regarding supporting students and themselves in social-emotional learning, and also providing rigorous and engaging learning experiences, no matter the platform, whether it's in-person, or hybrid, or virtual, because they all look a little bit different when you do that. But also professional development for parents in terms of supporting their students, in terms of understanding technology, if that is a, a need, especially for students who might be transferring into the district and may not have been exposed to the technology and, and the platforms that we use. Scheduling is a bear because we're not only scheduling for all in-person, but we're scheduling for hybrid, and we're scheduling for all virtual. And again, excuse me, those all look slightly different. Those formats look different. And they're slightly different, elementary, middle school to high school, although we're shooting for a overall K-12 format to take into account families that might have children at multiple levels so that you're attending school, if it's in a hybrid format, on the same days in person as opposed to possibly having the challenge of having to navigate multiple days. And then extracurricular activities, not only take into account athletics, which is driven by NJSIAA, but also clubs. Some of the clubs will be dictated by the organizations such as the Waxman Institute, or New Jersey Science League, what they're, they're trying to do. And other clubs will be dependent on whether or not we are in-person or virtual. Some clubs can run virtually, and other clubs don't make any sense to run virtually. So some of this is to be determined depending on, you know, which, which model we're going to be moving forward with.
Thank you. Also, there are some other activities and interactions that we have to keep in mind as, as we move forward. And that includes like any affirmative action investigations that might come up, any back-to-school night, parent-teacher conferences, any IEP meetings, our life skills program. We are still required to do fire drills and lockdown drills, et cetera. We're looking for guidance on that. And then, as, as Dr. Felstry indicated, there are things that are yet to be determined. This is, I don't, I'm not sure that there's anything any of us want more than to have our kids return to school in the fall. I mean, this is what the fall is. I always say that we're sort of lucky because we get two New Years as educators. We get January and September. And it's just a fun time of year. And so while I think that everybody would love to have all of our students in and all of our teachers in, we really need to balance and weigh what's most appropriate, honestly, based upon the guidelines set forth from the Department of Ed and the Governor's Office. So a lot of this really is out of our hands. We're trying to do what's best for everybody, knowing that whatever plan that we move forward and adjusts as time goes on is not going to be the best plan for everybody. I think that all of us are seeing it if we live in town, if we don't live in town and are dealing with other school districts, all the same conversations are taking place. So that is the end of this presentation, and there will be more to come as we will need to report this out again and provide the community with more information as it becomes available. Thank you, Dr. Saad.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. So I want to be clear that only four board members are sitting on the district restart committee, and those board members are a subcommittee of the board. And I have named those to be Greg Gillett, for his expertise on operations, Chris Pulcifer, for his expertise on HR, Lisa Maroon, because she has students in the district, as some of us, some others do as well. She's a teacher in another district, and she's also, you know, a coach in another district or has been. So she's very familiar with extracurricular activities and the effects of things. So that is that. The other piece that I wanted to say before we went to public comment and board comment was that I have also named a negotiations subcommittee of the board for negotiations with the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association. And those board members are Chris Pulcifer as chair of that subcommittee, carrying forth his role from the HGA negotiations team, Lisa Maroon as well, and Jane Stats. So we will be initiating those discussions with the HPSA very shortly, we hope. We note that they are working outside of their contract now, which expired at the end of June. And obviously, they've all been very busy assisting with this DRC as well. And so hopefully, we can move forward and settle that contract quickly.
Dr. Saad, could you also correct my error when I said four weeks before school starts? I apologize for that. It's September 3rd.
Full start September 3rd, and four weeks before would be August 6th. And I think Lisa merged her numbers and said September 6th was the first day of school. So we're not starting school on Sunday, nobody gets upset by that. But yes, we still, we have not, we have not, the district restart committee has not altered the calendar in any way yet at this point. We're just starting to get down into the nitty-gritty. And the way that we've been operating, as Dr. Antunes and others have said, is as separate subcommittees to address potential issues. But the real interesting part will be when we synthesize that, because as indicated, the best thing for transportation may not be the best thing for education. And so we really need to synthesize that, you know, as they say, the devil is in the details. And so hopefully, we'll be getting those details out to the community, you know, sooner rather than later. The other piece is that, of course, the game is changing all the time, and that, you know, we're going to have to try to deal with any changes that come, as, you know, as they come. For instance, today, the governor announced that we would be able to offer an all-virtual option for those parents who are requesting that. That was not, the opinion yesterday was that an all-virtual option could not be offered, and that some portion had to be in-person. So those parents, those 20% of parents who said that they did not want to bring their child back in-person, we were sort of left out in the cold as to what we could do for them, you know, did they have to disenroll and homeschool? So we're, I think we all sighed, you know, had a big sigh of relief that that was not in fact the case, that we could offer an all-virtual option. What that looks like is still to be determined. I note that a lot of the public comments that are coming in, in fact, all of them are on all of these topics. So I will open it up to the public now, and so I will start reading through these. They are lengthy, and I understand why. You know, these are all very complicated issues, and so we're all struggling to, you know, to sort of see what school will look like, so we can prepare for that and reassure our children. So I'll start with the first input, which was from Linda Downey on Reading Lane. "I am a first-student driver for Hillsborough, and my question is what is being done to keep drivers and their aides safe?" I think Mr. Mahmoud addressed that. From Megan Knapp on Van Zandt Drive, "If the hybrid model is being implemented, would the kindergarten maintain the same half-day hours? Is there a possibility to choose to send the kindergarten students all four days if the hours are shortened?" From Jenny Vargas on South Branch Road, "What will special education programs look like for the upcoming year? If a parent wishes to donate air purifiers for their children's classroom, will this be met with resistance? Has the district considered asking parents if that is something they are willing to donate?" From Monica Custer of Fairfield Lane, "Whatever option we choose for our children in September, will we be allowed to change it over the course of the year depending on the changing pandemic?" From Alex Aroth of Wildflower Lane, "What are exact remote learning arrangements will be implemented for Fall 2020? Will teachers be required to have daily video meetings with students?" Teri Garcia of Montfort Drive, "I see that New Jersey is allowing remote learning as an option for those of us who are uncomfortable sending our children to a physical classroom. Has this been factored into your plan?" And I think the answer was yes, it will be factored into the plan. Akshay Goll of Heights Lane, "Are teachers being trained for providing virtual classrooms as opposed to just giving assignments and video links to students specifically for middle school?" From Lindsay Shirvanian of Laurel Drive, "What is the plan for kindergarten and CAP? Have there been discussions of canceling either program? How will the district safely allow students lunch or snack? How does the board envision that student socializing will take place while wearing PPE and adhering to CDC guidelines? How much money has been devoted to professional development for staff to ensure that they can support students during a global pandemic? This could include academic support, but also social and emotional." From Jennifer Hobson of Beechwood Circle, "If students do go back to school in person, will there be changes made to the ventilation of the buildings? Considering how old many of these schools are, I am very worried about the air quality." Obviously, that's something Mr. Mahmoud mentioned as well. Denise Goodhue of Laurel Drive wrote, "Good evening. As a parent, I am concerned about my child's safety for in-person instruction during a pandemic. Could the board please address excluding exceptions? Will masks be required for all students? How many children will be placed on buses? How many students per seat? Substitutes are difficult to obtain during regular years. How will the district address substitute shortages, both long-term and daily? Given that many of our buildings and classrooms do not have air conditioning, has the district determined the temperature at which wearing a mask becomes dangerous? When will the board be sharing the full parent survey results with the community?" From David Persley of 15 Daniel Drive, "Thank you for all of your hard work with everything that goes into getting school open in a safe manner. It is a daunting task that has no perfect outcome. So thank you very much. What will kindergarten look like in the fall? Our youngest students already were only exposed to half a day of instruction. If a hybrid model is put into place, will these students have even less time in school? Also, will the schools be offering before and after care in the school buildings? Thanks again." From Daniel Shirvanian of 14 Laurel Drive, "If a teacher or student tests positives, will the whole class need to quarantine? If so, how long? What about the students on their buses? Do any board members have children currently enrolled in the district who would potentially follow the plan developed by the board? Substitutes tend to work in multiple districts and multiple schools. Has the district developed any protocol to ensure substitutes are not possibly spreading the virus from or to other buildings and districts? In states that reopened early, there has been an increase in infection and death amongst all ages. What is the district's threshold for cases of infection before switching back to remote learning? What is the goal of the district? Simply returning or providing quality education that allows them to meet curriculum standards? Will you contact trace how, what about HIPAA? And also, what percentage of buses will have aides on board?" From Victoria Fryman of Snowborne Place, "Since you feel it is necessary in the interest of public health to hold this board meeting virtually, how can you honestly consider opening schools? Is the health of our children and staff members less important than your health?" I think we got another one down further similar to that. And I will say that obviously, we are developing a plan under the guidance of the governor, and the board hopes to return to in-person learning, in-person meetings soon as well, when it is safe. And we've had several complicating factors that, this week, that didn't allow us to return to in-person this month. Regardless, we want more public input, and we will try to encourage that through other alternatives, using technology if we can't meet in person. From Mary M. of Autumn Road, "Good evening. This board is being socially responsible and conducting a virtual meeting as well as themselves to keep others safe." So hers is very much in line with Victoria Fryman's, asking how, if we are meeting virtually, will we be able to ensure the student's safety? "If a hybrid model were to be implemented..." This is from Heather Di Benedetto of 24 Kilmer Drive. "If a hybrid model were to be implemented, what kinds of educational support services would be put in place for teachers' own children? As essential workers without the ability to timeshare their work, some form of facilitation oversight would be needed. As a teacher and parent in this district, this is a concern for myself and I'm sure many other fellow teachers." And I can tell you that that is being discussed as well in our DRC. From Michelle Graham of Droste Lane, "First of all, thank you to the Board of Ed and the committee for taking on the task of returning to school safely. In the 2021 school year, how will the district measure the success of the children's education, whether it's virtual or in-person? Are full school days being considered? And if not, how are we ensuring curriculum is met with a half-day schedule? If parent involvement is needed during a virtual school day, can the parents and students get the materials in advance, a week in advance, to homeschool on a time that works for families? Will the education at virtual be live daily instruction?" From Didier Jimenez of Gemini Drive, "I would like to encourage the board to please put the safety of our educators and children first. I am an essential worker with a pre-existing condition, and I understand how terrifying it sounds to go back to work. I hope the Board of Ed leads in the right direction during these unfortunate times. Stay safe, board members and the Hillsborough community." From Laura Javier of Hillsborough, "I felt that the survey questions were not straightforward, asking if you will take the bus or go to school, not saying if certain scenarios were in place. If I said no, I was worried if my child would not have bus options if school was open, et cetera. I can say that as we progress, more surveys will come to parents, and at some point, you may be asked to commit to something for a certain period of time. But nothing right now is being recorded as your child will not be getting bus or something like that." From Carrie Mendez of Marlboro Commons, "Many Hillsborough staff members have children. What if any accommodation or considerations are being taken into account to allow staff to come to work? Are you looking into working with staff to assist them with child monitoring in some way?" As I said, we have been discussing staff childcare issues since we had almost 15% of staff record that as a major issue for them. Jason Fox of Beechwood Circle, "Will there be fall high school sports?" And as, as Dr. Feltry said, that is managed by the NJSIAA, and we will react according to their guidance. From Jeff Fusco, "Dr. Antunes, your bias is showing when you sounded disappointed that so many parents voted that they would send their kids back to school on a regular schedule." From Anisha Patel of Heights Lane, "What's the protocol in the event there is a sick child or staff member that exhibits symptoms on school premises?" From Katie Foster of Bryan Pike, "Will there be busing for sporting events at the high school? What will happen with classrooms that do not have air conditioning?" From Kelly Volano of Meadowbrook Drive, "In light of the surge in cases in the United States and that the surveys were sent out in early July, will another survey be sent out since the information is continuously being updated?" Yes, I said there will be more surveys coming forward. "Out of curiosity, is the Board of Ed advocating for virtual instruction? To think that at the end of July, Board of Ed meetings are being held virtually, and that schools may be opening in six or seven weeks seems like going zero to 60 in five seconds. We're not advocating in any sort of way." Akshay Goll of Heights Lane, "The busing plan does not sound safe for students. Curtains, soft partitions will probably house more germs than providing protection. Plus contractors should be held accountable, time permitting. Cleaning does not sound very convincing." Thanks. Robin de Vincentz of DeCamp Drive, "I'm trying to understand why you would only place Plexiglas in the front offices and not between the students' desks or teachers' desks. It should not be about the money. Since we know that using this would help in preventing the spread of the virus, then it should be done. There are many things that are necessary to put in place, but since the money is not there, the students and staff should be expected to return." Matushi Banargi, "Seniors and college applications that are due in October, how do you plan to handle that?" Andrea Gersaci of Davenport Way, "You mentioned adjusted curriculum for next year. I think that it is important for students' stress level if school is virtual. Will this apply to high school AP courses as well, since most parents can't support their students in these courses?" David Brook of Winding Way, "As you have indicated, the health and safety of students and staff in our schools is of the utmost importance. One of the concerns about the coronavirus is that it is invisible to the naked eye. In order to increase the confidence in many steps proposed to sanitize the buildings and transportation systems, and to assure everyone as to its effectiveness, has there been any consideration towards some form of virus testing, error or surfaces to determine if the virus is identified in any buildings or transportation systems?" From Marissa Sladek of Dover Court, "Have you included parents of children who have IUPs and/or 504s on your planning committees?" From Mary Beth Delisi of Stat Drive, "If the hybrid model is in place, maybe start off the first two days of school with, say, the red cohort attending the first day and the gold, yellow cohort attending the second day? Those first days in-person are invaluable." Very interesting that there seems to be some leaks in our color coding. Ken Miko of Ardsley Road, "I'm glad to see 80% of staff and parents feel it's safe to return to school. Daycares have only been open, have been open for months with no issues, and death rate for 18 and under is essentially zero. Thank you for your hard work." From Angela Hoare of Equator Avenue, "If parents and students and parents are given the option to return virtually instead of in-person for their safety, will the same consideration be given to teachers and staff?" Rebecca McManus of Wildflower Lane, "Since you are not answering most of these questions now, when will you be addressing them? Many of us assume that you would answer these questions as you would in a normal Board of Ed meeting." I read this before, but I will read it again now, that these are, all of our question and our virtual public forum, all public forums, whether they're virtual or in-person, are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. And we, where the board believes there was misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments, but we do not generally answer them in a regular public in-person session. From Judy Tuan of Mountain View Road, "As governors stress that wearing masks is essential to stop the spread, how do you enforce all students, especially elementary children, wearing masks throughout the in-person school time? Also ensure them to wear it correctly." From Tangy Lane of McCoy Court, "Can the virtual portion of teaching be run like a Zoom meeting with the teacher at front and center, teaching and instructing for 50 minutes, and the kids up on the screen as if they are in the classroom?" From Anisha Patel, "Will the needs of special education children be taken into consideration when providing online learning exclusively? Will there be more of a structured live instruction schedule that focuses on smaller groups?" From Ami Capizano of Brendan Way, "As there is a lot of misinformation about this pandemic, can the district provide a panel session with Department of Health and physicians to educate parents and teachers?" From Heather Lorocco of LaRico of Bloomingdale Drive, "Has the administration developed a procedure to deal with students who refuse to wear masks? Will they have support from Central Office of Administration and the Board of Education?" And that is it for our public comment. I'm going to close it there. These were all great questions, many of which are being considered by our DRC. I will say that there was discussion about the potential of doing a mixed virtual and in-person classroom, so that a teacher would be standing in front of the in-person students, and the virtual students could see them at the same time. And our technology, while we have invested a lot in technology over the last several years so that we can become a one-to-one district, our technology is not so advanced to offer that option. to offer that option. So, so that is not being considered at this point. I think we've discussed a lot about kindergarten and CAP in our, in our meetings so far, but we have not synthesized a plan together to present in more detail to the public at this time. I think it's important that we keep the lines of communication open. I want to make sure that everybody is aware that they should send more comments and questions to the board@boe@https.us. And we will address those as part of the, the DRC if appropriate. As Dr. Antunes said, we are getting flooded with questions, and it's hard to answer each one back, but know that we are reading them and considering them. I think it's really important to understand that a lot of this, what's going on in this pandemic has become politicized. That is not how this board operates. We are apolitical and nonpartisan, and I think, you know, you shouldn't read into anything that we do. We are trying our best to ensure that we are communicating with the public while keeping everybody safe. And there's nothing that any one of us would like more than to see students safely retain, return to school, and ensure the safety of the staff and the students. We have to go by whatever the governor is requesting of us to do, what his guidance states, and that is what the DRC is considering. We don't separately evaluate data. We don't, you know, we don't talk about what this is going to do for anybody except our staff and students. And, and so it's, it's really important to, you know, to know that upfront. So I will open it up to board comment now. I've closed public comment. Anything that comes in after this will be submitted to the board as correspondence and tacked on to our next board agenda. I know that there's all, probably already going to be a question about whether or not this Google form could be made available to all board members. I will request that that in fact is the case, so that everybody can see what the board, what the input has been. And so I'll open it up for comment. Mr. Gillette.
Thank you. And thank you to Dr. Antunes, Mr. Mahmood, and Dr. Feltry for, and Mr. Callahan also. I forgot, he also weighed in there. Thank you, Mr. Callahan, for the presentation. So I, I agree with Dr. Antunes that I don't think the board should ask tonight specific questions about things that are still being deliberated in the committee, because once we start talking about those specific things, and it gets out there to the public, some people will pick that up and say, oh, that's what they're doing, when really, decisions have not been made. But I did have a general question about how the, how the guidance works. Now, within the state guidance, there's some leeway about what we can do, there's some decisions we can make, and that's why we're having a meeting like every day for three hours. Otherwise, if it was all spelled out, it'd be pretty quick. So my question is then, once we, once we've come with a plan, it gets submitted to the county superintendent for approval?
Yes.
And we expect it's going to be approved, because we're going to follow all the things. All right, so let's say it's approved. Now, I, I heard some discussion tonight already that, you know, things could get very bad, and we could go all virtual, the governor can come out with an edict, close all the schools. My question is, what if the opposite happens? We could come up with a plan that winds up being quite restrictive, with minimal in-person school hours for students. I'm not giving anything away, I hope, but it could be like that. What if we go 30, or 40, or 50, or 60 school days in with, with no illness? With no school, with no children getting COVID, no teachers out from it? Are we locked into the plan that we submit? Or must we, or must the plan as we submit it have a few paragraphs in there with our own out clause, like that we will change this if things are better? I mean, I don't want to be locked in, and then three months from now, parents coming to us and saying, "I want my kids back. There's, it's, it's disappeared from New Jersey. On April 14th, there were 8,000 people in the hospital. On July 20th, there's 800 people hospitalized. On October 20th, what if there's 40 in the hospital?" You know, so, so my question is, can we change the plan once it's submitted? And what's your, what's your thoughts on that, Dr. Antunes?
Sure, sure, Mr. Gillette, thank you. Actually, yes, and I don't, I don't know if you remember, but the flexible learning plan, we adjusted several times, because as either new direction came from the, the state, we adjusted it, or as we learned more information, or as things, we figured out how things were working for us, we were able to adjust it. So as long as it remains within the confines, then yes, we can absolutely adjust it. Now, that doesn't mean it has to come to the board at a public meeting every single time, but certainly like we did with the flexible learning plan, as we adjusted, we let the community know via school messenger or that sort of thing. But yes, we can adjust it as time goes on. Either way, either way, we can adjust it. So yes.
All right, that, thank you. That, that's important to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Gillette. Mrs. Stats?
Thank you for the very thorough presentation. I think that answers a lot of questions that some people may have had. One thing I want to emphasize, just, just based on what some of the questions that some people have posed is, right now, we cannot have 100% virtual.
Correct, correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear about that. So, so that's not even an option.
In order for it to do that, we would have to have an executive order from the governor, like we had when we closed schools in March.
Exactly, right, right. As you said, it's, it's the state, it's the governor that has mandated that. As far as the District Restart Committee, how many people are on the committee?
About 50, between 50 and 54 or so.
And I see that it says parents with dual roles.
Yeah, so sometimes they're staff members, sometimes they're staff members and parents, they're board members and parents, that sort of thing.
I don't see any separate listing for teachers.
They're, they're in there. They're, they are in there. It was just staff, I think, is the way they put it in the, in the, in the roadback plan. But there are teachers on the committees, both.
Well, I mean, I, I, but I think the number of teachers and what variety of teachers are is important, especially, and to, especially because teachers and aides, or anybody who's working with groups of students, that's a real safety issue. And also with respect to the survey, you know, how the whole staff responds as far as, you know, can I work and teach from home? I'm not, I notice it can, which I thought that the choice of that word was, was odd. But, you know, the, there, there's more of a concern for safety, I think, for anyone who's working with a group of people, such as students. And there's, there are staff members that, that aren't in those positions. So I, I just think to have more teachers of variety, that that would be their sole concern, as opposed to being a dual concern. And also, on the other end, I think there should be parents there that aren't, don't have, they're not a staff member, because then their focus would be on their concerns maybe about childcare, you know, without being diffused by other concerns as a staff member, which is a legitimate concern. It's, it's a real serious concern for, for a lot of people. And also, it seemed like there wasn't, I mean, there, there were details about the proper procedures on the buses, but unless I missed it, I didn't really see a lot of procedures as to what happens in the classroom. I, I like, I know there was a lot of detail about, about the cleaning of the classroom, you know, in non-school hours, but I, I wasn't sure about the procedures during classroom time as far as, you know, well, especially if there's changes in classes, you know, cleaning the, the desks or whatever, how that will be done, if it will be done, wearing a masks. And I'm also concerned, I, I think you said that the parents will be screening at home. I thought the governor's directive was that there should be screening upon arrival.
Is a visual screening, and I believe a lot of our, honestly, our staff members have been doing that for years and years. You know, you see a child, doesn't look quite right, you ask them some questions, how you feeling, that sort of thing. And so it's a visual screening. And it does say, I think, I think the word they use is may, temperature checks may be completed in school. However, you know, honestly, we have so many students, and we'd have to add, you know, much more time to the day. But I will also say that in consultation with not only our school physician, but other superintendents, and, and, and quite frankly, even our local Department of Health, taking temperatures upon entrance into school or entrance onto the bus was not recommended. We know that, we know that you can have, not have a fever, and 20 minutes later, get a fever. You know that parents could, parents, staff members could take Tylenol and not have a fever when they arrive at school. So there are other things we can do. I just want to also point out that the pandemic response teams in each of the buildings is mostly made up of teachers, and as well as other staff members and, and parents in the community. There are community members who reached out to us, who either have children or grandchildren in the, and so we, we, I, I know if they've reached out to me, I forwarded their names to each of the building administrators, wherever their children attend or grandchildren attend. And we've also had some community members reach out, saying that they would be willing to help, that they don't have, have children, and I have reached out to some of them as well. So I, I don't want you to think, I don't want anybody to believe that on the District Restart Committee, that there are not teachers, and there are not people who don't fall into that category, but really, at the school levels and the community levels, there is much more of that than any other, than any other category. So I, I just wanted to point that out, that's all.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and, and I've, I've addressed this before, that I, sometimes there is a problem with, you know, information being filtered or distilled, maybe from the, the school level, pandemic, whatever that, that, those groups are called.
Pandemic Response Team.
Right, thank you. To, to the District Restart Committee. And, and just when you have, you know, so many administrative people on the DRC, and then, and, and they're not in direct contact with groups of students, as opposed to, you know, teachers and instructional aides and lunch aides. And, and just by the lack of not even addressing how, what's happening in the, what's going to, supposed to happen in the classroom, when we have details about other things, at this point, it's a concern of mine.
Well, Mrs. Stats, I just, I just want to, just want to share that, that, that is a huge nut to crack, and they are in the process of doing that. So as, as Mr. Gillette said, to put some of that stuff out there now would be, would be premature. We are working through those things, they're not being ignored, we are working through them, and some of that is dependent upon the schedule that we move forward with in each of those categories. So I, I, again, I just want to be clear that it's not being ignored at all. It's, it's, it's got its complications in a different way, and each schedule will be, will require different things, but it is being discussed. And it's also being aligned with what is happening with Mr. Mahmood's subgroups. So the, we, it is not being ignored, it is absolutely something that is being developed and, and will continue to be rolled out. It's not that we don't have ideas, and, and we don't even have what, what we want to move forward with, but we want to make sure that it's feasible to, to do that prior to rolling anything out.
And I think you said that there will be backups, but PPE will, staff and students will be encouraged to provide their own PPE?
What I, what I, what I said was that it would be cost prohibitive for a district of our size to provide PPE to every student and every staff member every day. Now, there are, there are staff, there are categories of staff members that get PPE all the time, always have. We'll continue to do so, but.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, I just wanted to emphasize that, so that people know now, you know, plenty of time to prepare to obtain whatever materials are necessary for them.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to reemphasize it.
Thank you.
And, sorry, my, my notes are all over the place. I did have one other, oh. I think so, from some comments that I've read, I think from the, the staff survey, I think a lot of them are concerned with a hybrid, that they'll have to prepare different lessons for, for in-person as well as virtual. And I was wondering if, if, I, I think we, I don't know if I'm using the proper terminology, that they won't be able to livestream their lessons, so that they wouldn't have to prepare two separate lessons for those that are in-person, as well as those that are at home. Am I correct?
I would say that it depends upon the lesson. I mean, there are some lessons that you wouldn't have to, you know, you absolutely wouldn't have to do that. There might be a lesson where, well, it's, the delivery isn't going to come off as well online as it will virtually. So there might be things that have to be adjusted. I think the objectives are still the objectives of the lesson, it's how they're delivered that might be different. So the curriculum is still the curriculum, we still have to follow the curriculum as, as outlined, the way Dr. Feltry and the team will, will do that with and for teachers. But I, I'm not, I wouldn't say that every lesson has to have two plans at all. I think it depends what the objective of the lesson is.
But the only problem is time. You know, there's just so much, I mean, to, to, I would hope, yeah, I'm sure there are times where there might be a little tweak, maybe to do something as far as addressing the, the needs of the students that are home, but as, I mean, there are just so many hours in a day for the staff to prepare, you know, different lessons for those that are home and those that are in-person.
Okay. Any other board members wanting to make comment at this time? Mrs. Trujillo?
So I just wanted to comment on the parent survey, that 80% of the parents would send their kids back. I thought that was interesting. And the other thing is, there was a question from the public where they said that the board members with children in the district follow the district's restart plan. So I have three children in the district, high school, two in the high school starting in September, and then one at Aris. And I just wanted to say that I will send my kids back per the district's, whatever the district decides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Trujillo. Mrs. Maroon?
Yes, and I'm going to say the same thing. I would, I wanted to address that as well, that I too also have a, a first grader who will probably be following the plan. And I'm just like everybody else, I work in a different district, I have no clue what that plan's going to be. I have a husband who also works in another district, and we don't know what that plan's going to be. So I have potentially four different school districts in my household. So I am just like everyone else, trying to juggle and keep my head wrapped around it, and just trying to stay straight with the plan. And number, safety is the number one priority in all of this, for the students first, and teachers, and staff, and administrators.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroon. Mr. Oliver?
I just want to make it the trifecta. I have two girls that are both be going into high school next year, and I have the utmost confidence in our administration that they will do what's best for the district and for our children, and they will be very safe, as you could hear one is calling for mom at the moment. But I am looking forward to starting the school year with our kids back in school.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Any other board comment? Mrs. Haas?
Yes, I got it. I concur with everything that everybody says about my faith in the members of the administration to do the very, very best they can in all these ways, and I thank everybody who is working so hard to be able to achieve this. Now, here comes the big however, schools don't exist in a vacuum. And the bottom line is, going back to school by definition provides exponential opportunities for communities spread. I did not like hearing that masks would not be required of our bus drivers. I think masks are in order to prevent spread to other people. I think bus drivers, as well as everybody in the classroom, needs to protect the children of our district under any circumstance. I think it's very important for kids to get back to school. I think it's also extraordinarily important that they not pick up lifetime health problems, or worse, by going back to school prematurely. I think that we have to consider that we're not just dealing with our school, we're dealing we're dealing with everything that all of our staff members and all of our children are going out of school to and everything that they're going home to. And I'm not understanding what the plan would be if somebody in our school district, a child or a teacher reports that they are, uh, that they have tested positive. Is everybody in the class going to have to quarantine? Is everybody in the school gonna have to quarantine? Um, I'm very concerned also about starting school in the fall when there will also be flu, the regular flu, uh, running around as it does every year. I'm concerned about, as I said before, people wearing masks. Um, I'm concerned about the level of protection that people will be wearing um, in terms of their, um, masks, face shields, whatever it's going to be. I am concerned about the condition of our facilities. Every classroom is not created equal, unfortunately. Um, I'm concerned about, again, what we can control in terms of what people do outside of schools. Um, we have been having difficulty in hiring nurses. We have been having difficulty getting substitutes. How is that gonna work? Um, I just, you know, would like to know, um, whether or not we might be better off um, in a situation where we start the year in a virtual, low-risk opportunity and take our time, open more slowly as the district and the community spread lessons. And we have more of an opportunity to address each of the issues that are of concern. Um, I really don't think that, um, what we're looking for is a, an opening of school on September 3rd, 6th, whatever, and, um, having to turn around to a virtual, um, an all-virtual because there has been community spread. Um, we've done that once, we did it beautifully in 24 hours notice, but it wasn't without disruption and it wasn't without, you know, cost in terms of the delivery of curriculum for the last four months of the school year. So, um, you know, I, I hope that, um, you know, I, I've also had some concerns about, um, the survey because the staff survey that I read, you know, people said they were prepared to come back to school, but in the, um, comments area, there was about 50 pages of comments, which were exceptions or problems or concerns relating to if we come back to school. So I'm not convinced that looking at percentages works for me. Um, and I really think we would benefit by taking a little bit more time and seeing what happens. There are parts of our country where school starts in August and some states that are hell-bent on opening come under any set of circumstances. And I really think that there is a lot of opportunity here for the advisement to change as it did today. And the period is not even over, uh, in terms of, uh, when this report was due and the advisement from the state changed. It is going to be fluid. It's going to be locally fluid. And I just don't think chaos is a good look. And I really think that putting time into developing a solution to any of the issues that people found during the virtual schooling last year uh, would be very good time spent. So I, I would like to know what the requirements are for a student or teacher who tests positive if we go back to school.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas.
Are we being advised by, are we being advised by medical personnel?
We are being advised by medical personnel and more importantly, if somebody tests positive, um, the, the advice is to contact the, uh, Department of Health of the township and get the latest guidance there. So I am aware of, of situations that have arisen at area daycare facilities and other places. Um, and, you know, I don't know what it is today and I, and I, I have asked Mr. Mahmood to develop SOPs or standard operating procedures so that we are proactive and ensuring that we're not calling the Department of Health at the same time that five other people are calling the Department of Health and she doesn't have, you know, there's, there's short-staffed there at the township as well, I'm sure, with regard to these things.
Yes, they are.
That we know how to, how to handle them. And so, Mr. Mahmood, I don't know if you have had any opportunity to initiate those conversations, but what I'm hearing is that, um, there would be quarantining of people in that room, but not, um, in the whole building, but you might have more information on, on that.
Not yet, Dr. Soson. We are, we are working on the communication of that, but, uh, those plans, uh, we, we do not have a definitive, um, response to that at the moment. But what is, it's a charge that we, uh, that we are working on. Uh, but once we get that, I'm sure we'll share with the board and the team as well.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
All of these things, Judy, that you have mentioned are things that we've discussed in, in the DRC. You know, I can only say that we have to respond to what the current guidance is and the current guidance is that we have to supply in-person instruction. Today was the first time, as you said, that we were told definitively that we could provide virtual, but that doesn't take away the need to provide in-person instruction for those that, um, are willing to do the in-person instruction. I do want to also stress that 80% of our parents answering that that is the best situation for them does not, uh, at all indicate that they are uncomfortable with the situation and, and returning their, their students. It could be very much like we asked the staff, um, that a lot of that decision is being made on, on childcare issues or, you know, other familial situ- situation. We have not assessed that, but we hope to do so as we drill down. Mrs. Stats, I saw your, your hand up.
I just wanted to, um, uh, thank Dr. Feltry for addressing, uh, the need for additional professional development, especially for, uh, well, actually, whether it's in-person or virtual or the hybrid, um, uh, that either way, it's, uh, well, there will be new components for staff and students and, um, hopefully they'll get the assistance that, that will be very useful for the sake of our students. So thank you, Dr. Feltry.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. Obviously, nobody, you know, there wasn't a, a class at, in, you know, in college of, you know, how to teach during a pandemic, how to, you know, how to deal with children who are stressed because of this. I mean, you know, one thing that I struggle with is if we send kids back to school, I'm hopeful, as Mr. Gillette has said, that we would, you know, after months, not see any spread among, among our staff or our students. But what happens in the event that a student or a staff member gets sick and, you know, to that child in that classroom who is now quarantined for 14 days, worried about their teacher or their friend? And, you know, I mean, these are all things that we have to take into account. And it's, it's very stressful for the, those of us on the board and on the DRC. Um, I can tell you, the staff members are all taking this all very seriously to try to ensure that we can do the best for our community. Dr. Harris.
First of all, I'd like to thank the District Response Committee for the work that they've put into doing their, um, analysis so far. And I'm sure that as the governor announces things almost on a daily basis, the things that you have done will change almost on a daily basis. So, um, I know parents are anxious about what will happen for the fall and I'm sure teachers are as equally, um, anxious to know what the plan is. But, um, these are things that we've never faced before. Um, and so it's going to take trial and error in some of our decisions. Unfortunately, none of our buildings are totally air-conditioned yet.
Correct.
None of our buildings, um, we can't control the weather. I, as a teacher in the district, remember going back in September when it was sweltering heat. I questioned whether children will want to wear masks, which they should. It should be anyone in, in a social situation should be wearing a mask. I don't care whether they're six feet apart or 60 feet apart. Um, I think that it's going to be very difficult under those conditions to be able to start school if the weather is so hot that it's not allowing us to, um, be comfortable wearing masks. And I, I remember sometimes we've had days where it was so hot that we had to close school early because of that. And I know the committee is taking all of this into consideration, but I just want to bring that to the forefront for parents who are saying, oh, well, if it's hot, you really don't have to wear or pull it down on, under your chin. That's not gonna be acceptable. So, um, I, I just, uh, some of the behaviors I've seen in watching the media does not assure me that everyone will follow the rules. And that has me more frightened than the virus at this point. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Dr. Harris. These are all very good points and I can, I can assure you, having, you know, having been on the DRC for these past, I don't know how many hours we've been in there now, 18, 20, 24? It's, it's always a multiple three, so, um, but 18 to 24 hours, I'm thinking about this much longer. Um, these, you know, these are all things that, that we are considering and I'm, I'm very hopeful that we're coming to, um, some conclusions about what we can and can't do. And while, you know, it's about safety, it also is about what is, what is fiscally possible for us to do. Um, and, uh, you know, there is, there are no additional funds forthcoming from the state to deal with any of the mandates that are in that, that, um, document. And so, um, you know, that is a struggle as well when we talk about, you know, just, you know, having full days, for instance, and knowing that lunch is part of that, you know, full day and how do we accomplish that? Well, you know, we really, you know, struggle with, with those, um, possibilities of having a large group of students together eating lunch or eating in a classroom and then having to deal with all of the issues that arise from that. So I, you know, I'm sympathetic to the public's concerns about being in the dark. You know, we hear it from, you know, obviously the board members who are not on the DRC, I, you know, are not as, as informed as those that are. Um, but I can, you know, if I can assure all of you that we are considering all of these things and we will continue to consider, um, anything that comes from the public as well. And, uh, I, you know, I do appreciate this very open discussion. Um, before we close, board comments, are there, is there anything else? Okay, and I think we can move on to our action agenda, Dr. Intunes.
Thank you, Dr. Soson. Okay, so the.
You have committee reports, Dr. Smith reports, or no?
You're on mute, Dr. Soson.
Sorry, I was so anxious to move on to our action agenda, I forgot committee reports. So, Mr. Gillette, since you raised your hand, I'm gonna go to you first on operations.
Uh, no one's more anxious than me because I'm starving. But I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go really quick. The operations committee met on July 8th. Uh, we had the architect of record, uh, Mr. Wozni, came in to give us a report, um, on the, uh, all the projects going on from the referendum. Uh, was, in other words, roofing, um, the, uh, build, uh, BMS, that's the Building Management System, um, the, uh, security vestibules, uh, et cetera, and as particularly on, particularly on paving. Uh, so we, we, and I want to highlight this because we had some questions on the past week or so from the public about, uh, driveway, uh, paving at Sunnymead, when that was slated to begin. Actually, that was supposed to begin, um, the week of the 13th. That was, been last week, obviously, it didn't begin last week. Uh, it maybe should begin this week, but we don't know. But in any case, uh, it's on the schedule. It will be, um, completed before the first day of school. A nice, uh, drive-up turnaround area for parents to drop off at, um, at Sunnymead. Um, and it will be not, not anything, um, makeshift. It'll be a real permanent, uh, solution for that. So that's still on track and, and no need to worry about that. Um, we also talked briefly about, um, the referendum projects, uh, are on our district website. You can take a look at that and Dr. Soson, I think, had some recommendations for how she'd like that to look and they're very good recommendations. Um, Mr. Handler reported to us about, um, a novel approach to, uh, taking kids', um, uh, Chromebooks when they're broken to be fixed. And he's purchasing, um, what he's calling a, um, contactless locker where, uh, students, it's like a big, it's a locker that's gonna sit outside the high school in a covered area between the two wings there, 300 and 700 wing, if you're familiar with the high school. So it'll sit there and kids can actually go and get a code or something and put their Chromebook in that space in the locker. It's gonna have a bunch of, um, lockers on this device. And then, uh, the personnel, uh, to fix it will come and retrieve it and then the kid, when it's fixed, they can go back and pick it up. So they won't have to go down to the library or see anybody or however they used to do it before. So that, that's, that was interesting. We had our annual update on, um, legal matters, uh, from Mr. LaPiero. This is on, uh, matters about, um, having to do with litigation, any outstanding litigation. And we didn't go into detail. Uh, he just, uh, said there's a, a number of, as always is, um, special education litigation going on. And let's see, was, if there was a second one? Uh, okay, he did update us a little bit on, um, the insurance policies that we have to cover this. Uh, most of the, of the, um, uh, lawsuits and things that we're dealing with will be covered by insurance. Uh, we have a $10,000 deductible per case, but these, some of these things can run way over that. Uh, and, uh, a maximum coverage on most cases for, of $100,000. This is for the legal expenses. Uh, right, I, it's, so, um, that's all set up. Um, I'd like maybe one more thing. Well, we talked about some things that Mr. Mahmood also covered tonight, like busing, uh, what that's gonna look like for next year. Um, and finally, we talked about, um, the 2020 audit that's gonna be going on, uh, soon. The, the auditors will be in to go over our books. And especially that'll be easier now that the, um, municipal buildings open again. They'll be coming, be able to come in and do that, correct, Iman? Okay.
And, and, uh. You were in, Mr. Gillette, uh, this week.
Oh, that's awesome, that's great. And, uh, and finally, um, Dr. Intunes, um, gave us an overview of how the district restart committee would work. This was July 8th, this was way back, this is like two weeks ago. So she gave us an overview of how that was gonna work and, um, and that's it. That's the operations committee, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Uh, Mrs. Haas, can I ask you to give the education committee?
Sure, sure. Am I off of mute? I hope so.
You are.
Before I give my report, I would like to acknowledge the passing of Representative John Lewis, who was a civil rights icon for God knows how many years of his life, at least 60 that I know of. Um, he very passionately spoke about finding a way to get in the way and getting into good trouble. And I'd like to thank him personally for a lifetime of getting in the way and finding good trouble and hope he rests in peace. Um, we had at our education committee meeting a very robust discussion about curricular exposure to diversity and racism issues. Uh, Dr. Feltry shared that, um, a, a lot of subject matter in terms of anti-bias racism and black history are addressed across the curriculum. are addressed across the curriculum, and that we're being more intentional in empowering teachers to have conversations in the classroom and address these matters with their students. There has been training, and there will be more training coming up in our next in-service in our next in-service work. And we also talked about the availability of many, many good books that are out there. We don't teach from textbooks for the most part in social studies, and that there are many good voices and many good books that can be added to our curricula. And we also spoke about more of this kind of reading in our literacy classes as well. In regard to the summer English Language Learners Program, we were not able to run the program this summer due to feedback from the parent community, and we will try to make up for that during the 2021 regular school year, if at all possible, and that Mr. Lugo, the supervisor for ESL, were hoping to create outreach programs where actually they go out into the community to provide extra support to the population. So I'm very happy about that. And we have titled three funds to deal with all of that. We also discussed our summer reading situation, and we were, we concluded that it would be helpful to begin the process of selecting these summer reads earlier in the school year, so that there's plenty of time for review and board approval. We had a discussion about the Road Back Overview, but that was back on July 7th, and I don't think the first meeting had taken place yet. But you heard about all of that, so I don't need to do that again. And there was discussion about course sections at the high school in terms of some of the classes being large, some of the classes being small, and how that all happens. And since we were looking at numbers that were late in the year, they reflected a lot of people who dropped and changed classes over the course of the year. And, you know, we start the year trying to minimize unusually small or unusually large sections, but during the year, stuff happens. We also have issues in terms of our lunch periods and when they could happen, our facility availability in terms of rooms available, and balancing the numbers of students in our PE classes that complicate things. And there are a number of classes that students have to take, which are basically one or maybe two sections, which tends to throw out, you know, which tends to throw a lot of the scheduling. So we try hard, we try to make students, you know, every opportunity available to students to select things that they are interested in, and, you know, we do the best we can with that. There are a couple of issues that we will be following up on going forward, perhaps in the budget process as well. And the final part of our discussion was senior awards, and I'd like to thank the superintendent for reading out the list of awards that were given out this year. And that's it for education.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Pulsifer, the four-hour HR committee meeting?
We wanted to feel more like the Education Committee. So on July 14th, we did meet for quite a long time. We started with a discussion on contracts for unaffiliated staff. These are staff members who do not belong to any of the associations, either the HEA or the HPSA. We also had a discussion regarding contracts and handling of contracts for positions that are affected when we close schools. For example, in a full virtual case, there are some positions that don't make sense in those contexts, and trying to figure out how to manage the staff that are in those roles. So that's been an ongoing discussion, and it will continue as we try to deal with all these outliers that the pandemic is creating for us. We also had a discussion about personnel and vacancy updates. As of the meeting, we're in the process of hiring 35 new employees, and we also have two outstanding administrative vacancies and five nursing positions to fill as of that meeting. So we do still have some areas that we need to take care of, and especially, I think, given the current environment, those five nursing positions are critical in terms of helping guide us as we deal with the health issues that are on us in these back-to-school times. Like everybody else, we did spend a fair amount of time talking about the Road Back. Dr. Antunes gave us an overview, and we talked about some of the concerns we would have, and how that, not only how the process should move, but some of our thoughts about what we would hope to see in terms of a plan to come back. We had, at a earlier meeting, we had started a discussion about having wellness programs as part of our insurance plan and opportunities to use that to both improve the health of our staff, but also improve our insurance premiums, because we have a healthier staff. That's something we've been discussing, and we'll continue to work on that. Mr. Cowhand will be working with Centric, our insurance broker, to see what alternatives there may be out there. We've continued to pursue this. I think this is, considering all the health, other health issues we've been talking about, you know, having a wellness program is a great thing to add to this. And I'd like to thank Ms. Trujillo for having brought this up to us several times and continuing to argue in favor of this and keep us, keep our nose to the grindstone and make sure we get somewhere with this. So thank you, Ms. Trujillo. And that was our meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Can't imagine how that took four hours, but good.
Staff, school, sick, you got it all.
Yeah. Okay, are there any board member questions for committee? Mrs. Stats?
This is for the Education Committee. I think it was several months ago, I brought up, I wanted to ask for numbers with, in the high school where there are sections, multiple sections in the same period that have small numbers. And the numbers are so small, I can't, and a lot of them are CP classes, that it's not like they can drop down to something else. So I'm just still wondering if we can look more into looking closely in not having so many small classes in the same period of the same course at the expense of having smaller classes in the same department, especially, you know, when they reach 30 or more students.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. I don't know if somebody wants to address that, Mrs. Haas or Dr. Feltry or Dr. Antunes?
I mean, some of the classes, some of the classes with very low numbers may have students who dropped out of them for one reason or another, and under those circumstances, you wouldn't necessarily go to the other, I mean, you could ask for volunteers if they want to switch classes, but depending on the time of the year when that would happen, kids are already in their classes, working with a teacher, and would not necessarily want to switch to a different section. But you would know that, right? And some of the classes, it just happens that way. I'm not, you know, I'm not really sure how that all works, but...
For example, like Algebra II CP, students don't drop from there. There's no place to drop to, they can't drop it entirely. And this, I only became aware of because some former colleagues of mine came to me, and they started out with small numbers. So it's not like they had a lot, and then it dropped down, because there's not any place for them to drop to anyway. So, and some of the other ones, the numbers are so low, I can't imagine they had, you know, 25 students dropping down to 11. Again, and they're CP classes, so I don't know where they dropped to.
Can I just say that, I mean, there was also the, well, let's start with saying that the administration is aware, going to try their best, that obviously is last year's data, so trying their best to manage this better in the future. But there were also some issues about having to reduce some class sizes because there were special ed, some special ed students in there, so they had to have smaller sections. So they were...
I wasn't looking at those. I know about those, I know about, because I've had those classes. But I'm glad you're just using that information, moving forward to make sure the classes are more equitable.
Equitable, exactly. I mean, I think that that is, it's important that if two classes are at the same time, where possible, they be the same size, you know.
Or combine them. I mean, you know, or combine them so that frees up a section for a big Algebra II Honors class or something like that.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. Okay, so any other questions for committee chairs to address? Seeing none, then we can move to the action agenda, Dr. Antunes.
Thanks, Dr. Sasan. Okay, so we've got, we'll move as a whole, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approves the Education, HR, and Operations Agenda as follows. Education, 10.1, motion to approve revisions to policy for second reading, that's the high school graduation policy. And then Human Resources, 11.1 to 11.8, motion to approve retirements and resignations. And I'd like to thank Mr. Bill Hunt for 16 years prior to his retirement as a middle school teacher. A motion to approve extra coverage, 1920. Motion to approve transfer or change in assignment. Motion to affirm appointments. A motion to approve the ESY program staff. A motion to approve renewal of the Business Administrator slash Board Secretary for the 2020-2021 school year. Motion to approve unaffiliated staff salaries for 2020-2021. Motion to approve revised contract, 2020-2021. The Operations Agenda, 12.1 to 12.2, motion to approve the monthly bills, and motion to accept the donations of, it was $30,000 to be used for ARIS reading resources from Mr. Bert Gunter. We thank him for that. I think you're on mute, Dr. Sasan.
I am, yes. I will take a motion to approve the agenda items as read by Dr. Antunes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Mrs. Stats, I can like that motion, thank you. Okay, it's open for any questions. Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Certainly. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahmood?
Yeah.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mahmood. I'd like to point out to everybody that our next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 24th, and it will be determined whether or not we could do that in person or whether it be virtual, but we are hopeful that in either case, we may see some faces, and that perhaps we will have the ability for the public to communicate with us, either through a phone or in some other manner. Any other board comments before we call adjournment? Ms. Trujillo?
I just have a few updates, if I may. So I wanted to let everyone know that the Hillsborough Education Foundation is having a logo contest. Submissions are due by July 31st. You can find out more information at hef.org. In addition, the HEF is hosting a book drive to replenish teacher classroom libraries, and books will be collected at the Township Municipal Building on August 4th, August 5th, and August 6th, and we thank the Township Committee for their cooperation in allowing us to use the municipal building. The second item I have is I wanted to invite my fellow board members to a joint Hunterdon and Somerset County School Boards Association meeting. It will be virtual, August 3rd at 7:00 p.m. Third, I wanted to mention to the public who might be listening that Board of Education petitions are due to Somerset County Clerk's Office on Mondays, July 27th, by 4:00 p.m. That's to run for the three seats that are, terms are expiring this December, so that would be your names would appear on the nominating, sorry, your names would appear on the general election ballot on November 3rd. Some more details are available on the Somerset County Clerk's Office. And then finally, I just wanted to point out to parents whose child might be struggling or in crisis that the state has a, I guess, a program, it's a free program, actually, for form care, that you can call 877-652-7624, and you can talk to the person who is, you know, who answers the phone, it's 24 hours a day, just trying to think, 24 hours a day, yes? And if your child is in crisis, the person who is on the line, I guess you can, well, okay, I don't completely understand how it works, but it's Call for Form Care, I gave the phone number, 877-652-7624, it's completely free. If you say your child is in crisis, either like an emotional, behavioral, you know, struggles or whatnot, mobile response can actually come to your home within the hour. And so I just wanted to put that out there, because it's, we learned about it through Municipal Alliance, and I just thought it was something that was not very well-known. I certainly didn't know about it before I learned about it through the Alliance, and just wanted to share it with the community. So that was my update, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments before we adjourn? Then I will take motions to adjourn. Sorry, what is that?
I'm going to take it from Mrs. Stats and Mr. Pulsifer.
So, Mr. Pulsifer, was that you making a motion?
Good news, Ms. Stats first, Mr. Pulsifer second.
Okay. Mrs. Stats leads by a nose, okay. So, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thanks, everybody, see you all next time.